Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We can do roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Vern? Scott? Craig? Don?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. We have the agenda in front of us. They get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Kelsey's second.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Yeah.
Vern? Scott? Craig? Approved.
Okay, then we were sent out, we also have the minutes of the last meeting in front of us, any corrections or additions to those meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion approved, do we have a second?
Second.
Don's second, a roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Yeah.
They are approved.
Thank you, we'll go into the next item is public hearings. First one is Leroy Thompson variance accessory structure in front yard not meeting front setbacks. Darren?
All right. Claire, are you able to share? That? PDF or should I have it? Or is it up?
It is not up.
Where I can sit where I can hear.
Hi Vern.
Otherwise I can just go through it. If everyone has it there.
Sorry, I was muted, I think you couldn't hear me. You should be able to share your screen if you want to, otherwise I can try to go to the website and.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, you want me to share my screen, gotcha, okay. Let me know when you can see.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is for a variance application from Leroy and Carol Thompson, six forty west Birch. So this is to keep a shed in the front yard of two streets. This was the application that was submitted. And then the drawing that was submitted. So. I think the area will probably show up, but this is the application that was submitted with the drawing and in a picture of it here. I'll have some more pictures that'll go into a little bit more, but. So this is eight by ten accessory garage. So this is within the front yard, two streets, not meeting obviously that front yard setback. The structure is about five feet off the intersection of both Birch and Buse. Standards for the code for variances are in one fifty four point oh one seven. And we are in the R two multifamily district. Where we have a front yard. And this is a corner lot. And hence the no accessory building shall project in the front yard border either street. So this is an aerial of the property here, this fifty by one hundred, this is the kind of approximate location of where the shed exists. As you can see, you're in the front yard of the two intersecting streets outside of the road right away. And then as you can see, this is the rear yard of this property. Here's a photo from street view, this is facing the house this direction and this is from the other, the facing south at this intersection. So this property as it sits, there really is no rear yard, as I said, there, the house is built very close to the rear property line. This shed is under two hundred square feet in size, so it doesn't need a building permit to be placed there, but it does need to meet the code requirements obviously that we have. Then here are some findings showing approval, if if you don't agree with some of these findings, or if there's any comments that you want to modify, you know, you can use these, modify them, create our own, whatever the planning commission wishes after the public hearing, but these are just something to consider. And that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Darren. Before we open up a public hearing, is there any discussion from the commission?
Do we have copies of those applications?
Yeah, they're in the packet that was emailed. The email.
Yeah, I didn't print them off.
Do you want to look at mine?
I read them, but I didn't print them.
Do you want mine?
Thank you.
If there's no discussion from the commission, I'll open up the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak, please come up to the podium, or if you're on Zoom, just let us know and state your name and address. Do we even have, do we have anybody else on? Okay. Mr. Leroy?
Yes.
You have anything you want to say? Okay.
I first, you see about six or seven years.
Okay.
Now is the only place you could drop it off with a truck. Back charging box, three, five feet.
Yep.
You say.
Yep.
That was the only option.
Thank you.
I wasn't aware of the quarter. Having two front yards.
Yep. If there's no other discussion of public, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve as stated.
Gates of motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded, any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, you're good to go. It's all approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Enjoy your shed.
That it's still contingent contingent on the city council? Accepting or is that a final? Correct, correct. Just for.
It goes to city council, but yeah, that's, you're okay.
You'll be, you'll be good.
Good point.
We can't guarantee it.
So there's a confusion there.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to the second one, sharing Easter Day variance accessory structure in the side yard not meeting set side setbacks, Darren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was the application that was submitted for seven twenty east Mount Faith Avenue. And then there's some additional documentation they they wrote on here instead of on the other piece. So this again is an eight by ten accessory garage. This is within the five feet side yard requirement to the neighboring parcel line. And then there's about twenty five feet off the road right away, the same distance as the house from the street. Again, our film fifty four point oh one seven is our practical difficulty. Accessory structures not being allowed any front or side yard. This would be in the instance of a side yard. You know, zoom into this a little bit. You can see here. The slot is not on a corner, but the slot shares this property line, this is the backyard for this property. And the shed is about this location here on this red box. Here's a street view showing the property. You can see there's significant topography over here. The shed is located in the area between the house and this fence, I think I have a picture of that, yep, here next here's what that looks like. So again, there's not a lot of rear yard in this particular property, more than the other one, but still not much. Again, this is a detached accessory structure less than two hundred square feet in size, so it didn't need a building permit to be put on the property. What it does need to meet are code standards. And so this is in the side yard, not a front yard, and it certainly appears closer than five feet to this side property line. Again, I showed some proposed findings here. If you wish to use them. Or if there's any, again, changes you want to be made or different ones altogether, we certainly can after the public hearing to use them. In this instance, this one was different than the primary structure facade in terms of color and everything, the other one matched, see if, you know, the blue and the white to match the home, so I thought this one, it is in code that it be accessory structures have a matching facade, so it could be where we would maybe want to condition that to be painted a same or similar color as the dwelling, it does have an eve matches the house, so. That was my only comment there on that one, that's why I have Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
We haven't had any comments from neighbors.
I have not received any comments prior to the hearing on anything. Correct.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody on Claire? Okay, there's no one on, so we'll bring it, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the contingency or the condition, I guess I should say, of painting the facade to match of the shed to the house.
Okay.
This is Kelsey, I'll second.
Okay.
Just, I have a question. The application for variance was for the structure as far as being in the front yard. But as I think Darren pointed out, it's difficult to tell, there's nothing in the paperwork. The application, but it looks as though it's encroaching on the variance or on the setback requirements for side yard. Is that a problem if since it's not on the application to get a variance for both?
I guess Darren, that'd be a question for you.
I did notice, I caught that right away in the application and therefore I I noticed to all the neighbors included in my report how it's to both. But yeah, I did catch that the application did not or called off. The did not catch the side yard. So I.
I would think we would want to include that and and as a stipulation that that the application be amended to include that setback as well.
I can amend my motion to include that if Kelsey's fine with that.
I am.
I am.
Okay. We got a motion, any other discussion? We got a second? Roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Vern?
Uh, yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Oh.
Well.
Tell him to get it.
Okay. Okay, new business, historic property designations, recommendation to council, broken down dam.
I'll turn this over to Claire, I think, for this.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Planning Commission members, so per the rules of the Heritage Preservation Commission, when they are designating properties to be recognized as locally important properties from a historical perspective, it does need to come before Planning Commission. So this is the latest one that the Historical Preservation Commission has been working on, there is, the the application was included in your packets, but it is for the entire broken down dam site, which is currently city owned, so it will eventually, it'll have to end up in front of council based on the rules of the Heritage Preservation Commission, but also to request from council that it be considered, but it it needs to go to this group as well for approval, so we do have RC Drews with us, who is the author of the of the application, so if you have any questions about the property itself or about the process, please let us know, but otherwise we will leave it up to you to see if you think it fits within the purview of the Heritage Preservation Commission to designate that site, and if so, to move it ahead to council.
Well, I had an opportunity to speak to RC. And he gave me the rundown of Broken Down Dam, and it's pretty interesting, there's a lot of history there, probably more than people even know. In terms of when you start, even what you wrote in here, Clara, there's a lot more history than a lot of people even know about it, I was asking my twenty one year old son about it, because that's just a place where kids hang out. So it's kind of cool to see that history. Especially with how short of time that dam was was there. You want to spend a minute or two? Yep.
Test one, two, okay. Well, good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission, pleased to be here on behalf of the Heritage Preservation Commission, I know many of you.
My name is RC. Through, at least I'm not picking you up.
Okay. How about that?
That's better.
There we go, I'll try to stay right here, and if I move, you let me know. So my name is RC Drews, I'm here on behalf of the Heritage Preservation Commission. And here to discuss the application for the local designation of Broken Down Dam as a city landmark, local landmark. As Chair Stanislavski mentioned, we did speak here the other day about this application, I wanted to provide a little background to the planning commission. And hopefully a little bit of context as to why this site would be significant, because I think the point is is well taken that today the site is largely known as a place for kids to gather, and you often see it referenced in local law enforcement reports, for instance, that occur out there. I can say that there are plans potentially in the works for that site to help improve it and make it a more viable and contributing part of the city instead of sort of a nuisance property. And this designation is in some ways the beginning of that process. We'll know more on that going in the next year, a lot of that is something that's in conversation with the city council right now, so. But but just a brief context overview on the Broken Down Dam site. It's back to nineteen oh six, it was in early nineteen oh six, February of that year, that the city council and city leaders were looking to get into the utility business, there was fair profit to be had. And there was an opportunity with the local waterworks, this was near the East Mount Faith Bridge, which is very close to the Broken Down Dam site there. There was a privately held waterworks and the city was considering the purchase thereof, the asking price about eighty thousand dollars, which in nineteen oh six was a fair chunk of money. And it took the process of a few months for that consideration, but ultimately the city did purchase that site. But but the the other aspect of this, Water Works was new to the city, but electricity was not, the city had been in the business of electricity, but in this area, era, we're referring to it more just as as lighting, because electricity, as we think of it today, was was less of a household convenience and something more for the purpose of arc lights and industrial equipment and so forth. The city had been in the business of providing that for some time, and it was a fair business for the city, but what they were producing was insufficient for the city's needs, and so there was a need to expand, in fact, there was a dam, the Kirk Dam, which was right near East Mount Faith Bridge and the the waterworks that was considered for the city to purchase to expand their offering, but the thought was that it would be just too costly to purchase that and maintain it. It was an older dam site and the existing dams that the city already had were proven costly to maintain, and so the thought of buying into yet another old dam with high maintenance costs wasn't palatable to the council at the time or to the community. And so the conversation began began around the idea of the construction of a new dam, and the site was selected to the east of what today is the Hoot Lake Power Plant, the Broken Down Dam site, which was downstream a bit from a former mill belonging to Henry Page. Henry Page, sort of a great, but also tragic figure in the early history of the city, he had a dam that was constructed there and it burned to the ground some years prior to the construction of Broken Down Dam, this seemed a viable site, there was about a hundred and fifty feet wide of space that ultimately would be utilized with the construction of the dam, and it was well received by the council, it went to the public in a vote that year, and it was well received there. This happened only a month after the purchase of that private waterworks, and so the city is moving very quickly on this. But it was a bit of a process, the construction of that dam, initially there was a contractor from Chicago that was intended to hire, to be hired to complete the entire project. And it was expected that it would begin in the fall of nineteen oh seven, it was expected to be completed on February first of nineteen oh eight. But that contractor, and it's not clear from the documents that we have whether it was his entire business, but certainly he defaulted on this contract and he backed out. In fact, he would later later bring suit against the city of Fergus Falls and make accusations against the city's engineer, claiming that the two had been in cahoots the whole time and all sorts of other stories, Broken Down Site, Broken Down Dam site, if nothing else, is a source for a lot of local conspiracy theories and continues to be more than a hundred years later. But the construction was began in fall of nineteen oh seven, and it was in nineteen oh eight that things got up to speed with two new contractors being brought in to handle the different aspects of the construction. There was a foundation that needed to be laid fifteen feet into the ground in the river there, the water had to be diverted to the south so that that could be accomplished. And slowly but surely, the structure was raised up, but by November of nineteen oh eight, that same year as it's nearing completion, there was evidence of a leak at the site, now the site, based on the description, appears to be towards the edge of one of the walls, and there was significant quantity of gravel that was brought in to patch that up, the belief, somewhat ironically, much like the Titanic, was that this was a structure that could never fail, it was so heavy and so well made that it would last for the life of the city. But ten months later, on September twenty fourth of nineteen oh nine, it failed catastrophically in the greatest flood in the city's history. It was about four thirty in the morning, there were two gentlemen. I forget their first initials, so forgive me on that, but Sunby and NP Johnson were the two individuals, and Sunby had been sleeping, he worked the earlier shift and went to bed at midnight. And four hours later, he woke up at four twenty in the morning, facing the wall with the lights on, trying to figure out why he would be awake, he'd slept for four hours, and there was no clear evidence of anything that should have aroused him. But he woke and he turned and he looked and he saw the lights flickering, and then he started to notice there was something making a sound that wasn't quite right, and he went to Johnson and he asked him what was going on, and Johnson thought maybe it was something with the wheel on the dynamo, something had gotten stuck, something was grinding, he was going to shut it off. And Sunby said, don't touch that, and he paused and he looked out the door and he could see and he could hear that the water level wasn't where it was supposed to be, and he could feel underneath his feet that something wasn't right, and the best course of action was to get out of that building. Johnson went first and he made for the stairs and the embankment, and Sunby went after him, and as soon as he went out the door, he looked into the powerhouse and he saw that ten ton dynamo sink into the water where he had been standing. They climbed up to the embankment and Johnson moved to shut the gates on the dam, and Sunby told him not to bother, Johnson couldn't hear him, but he got the gist of it. They both walked to the top of the embankment, by the time they got there, they watched the roof of this powerhouse collapse, and then they watched the walls give and the entire dam break into the water and tons and tons of concrete go rolling downstream. All of that water rushed forward, it was an immense force, but it was largely contained by the geography of that area. It's a rather steep channel surrounded on both sides, so it didn't spread so much as it just slowly crept forward, and when it got to the Kirk Dam, it leveled the Kirk Dam and that wreckage took out the power for the waterworks, the city had only recently procured, and so now the city is left without water source on that day. Fortunately, they had a steam generator, which in a couple hours' time, they would get up and running. Sunby and Johnson knew that they needed to do something, the water destroyed the East Mount Faith Dam or East Mount Faith Bridge after it destroyed the Kirk Dam. And so Sunby and Johnson made their way to a nearby farm because they figured a horse would be faster than walking. And they found one of the farmers and sent him to town with news of what had happened at the Fergus Falls City Light Station, as it was known at that time. And the long and short is that word got around town, the water hit city, the city central dam here. And it didn't wash out the central dam, it washed around the west side of the dam. That dam was used by Vernon Wright, son of city founder George B. Wright, to provide electricity for some of the industry and business that surrounded the city hall area as it is today. So that was taken out of commission, but that water then went down towards where would be service food in the Red River Flower Mill today. The flower mill at the time was in operation as well as Fergus Falls Manufacturing Company, which was wiped out during the cyclone. And it destroyed a portion of their dam, taking out their operations, it destroyed the whaling mill, and it went towards Dayton Hollow, which was the next dam at that time. Dayton Hollow was owned by Vernon Wright as well, again, George B.'s son, who also owned the whaling mills in addition to the electric generator here at Central Dam. And while that was an immense amount of water and it was an incredible force, it was also moving very slowly, so it took over two hours for it to reach the site from Broken Down Dam to Dayton Hollow Dam. And in that time, Wright and his business partner were able to make it to Dayton Hollow, lower their water level by about six inches. When the water hit, it rose back up about eight or nine inches, but it leveled off and Dayton Hollow Dam held. And the pictures that the Fergus Falls Daily Journal shared after this incident were of Dayton Hollow Dam, suggesting that this is where we'll get our power from in the future, that the city will have to make a contract. But what was simple to say in print, what was easy for a journalist to write, was not so easy for the council to negotiate. This was in some ways the birth of Otter Tail Power Company under Vernon Wright. And Wright and his business partner came to the community and said, you give us about ten days and we can have power supplied back for Fergus Falls. But the council wasn't so eager because the contract wasn't so simple, it was a ten year agreement. It was a ten year agreement, and it also specified that the city would remove itself from the business of power generation and sales in favor of opening it up to private entities such as the Otter Tail Power Corporation. And the council members balked at the term, they balked at the price, and they balked at that one in particular in the end there. They wanted a shorter term, they felt that they could rebuild their dam in two years, ten years was too long to be tied down if they had their own business back up and running. So this went back and forth for a couple of weeks, people had gatherings throughout the community trying to pressure the city council to take one course of action, which largely as the editorials in the newspaper suggest was to side with Otter Tail Power and buy their electricity. In fact, members of the council were skeptical of Wright and his business, because he was suggesting that at the highest price, he would sell electricity to the city at two and a half cents per kilowatt hour, but it had been costing the city over three cents just to produce it themselves with no markup. And they thought that that was highly unlikely that it could be produced so cheaply. It would later become the exact argument of why they should take this business and get themselves out of the power production business, because they couldn't do it as efficiently as a private company. But the process in entirety took the better part of a month, the negotiations went back and forth, and when it came down to a seven and a half year term, the city very nearly agreed once, backed out of the agreement, and then it came back again and again at that seven and a half year term with the same rates around two and a half cents per kilowatt hour. The city council members, under pressure from the community, decided that this was the best thing to do. They sent a diver into Broken Down Dam, a gentleman from Duluth, and mind you, this is a diver in nineteen oh nine, and he's wearing two hundred pounds of equipment going into that river. And he said that in several places, he would sink over ten feet into the the soil and the sediment in the river. And he found the dynamo, it was almost almost exactly where it had fallen, it had been carried only a slight distance further, and it was buried under many tons of concrete. And he said it was nothing but scrap iron, and so any thought of salvaging that and repairing that structure was largely abandoned. It was an engineer a year later from Minneapolis that reviewed the site and determined that it was not cost effective, it was not feasible to reconstruct the dam that had existed. And the cost of a new dam would be immense, and frankly, the cost of dealing with Otter Tail Power was cheaper than producing anyways, so there was no good business argument. The city ultimately decided to stay out and let Otter Tail Power provide, so it is sort of a battleground in the city's early history, as the city is trying to figure out its identity and main control, maintain control of certain industries and other industries, which now today, one of the largest companies in the city are seeing their birth under these terrific events very differently. But it's a fascinating site, it has long been a popular picnic site, now that seems a little amusing to say in twenty twenty one, but during the thirties and forties, it was a common site for people to stop by and spend the afternoon at Broken Down Dam. And there's hopes that maybe it could be returned to that sort of state in the future. Again, we're beginning with a local designation as a a landmark, so. That's what we have before you, if there are any other questions on the specifics of the application that we have, hopefully it's found to be all in order, I do know there's one typographical mistake, there's a portion of a page that's missing on here, so we'll get that corrected before the council, there's about a paragraph and a half that font size got adjusted and it flowed off the page, so we'll correct that in the the final version to the council. We do have photos attached as well, we have a historic photo taken by W T Oxley. We do have photos attached as well. We have a historic photo taken by W.T. Oxley, probably, if not um, the most famous photographer in the city's history, responsible for many of the great photos of the cyclone of nineteen nineteen as well. And this, I don't know the exact date on it, except that it's from nineteen oh nine, um, so within the year that it was destroyed. But that's easy to say if it only stood for ten months, of course. Um, it shows the, the site in operation. You can see the powerhouse where Johnson and Sunby had been working that night. And then you can imagine the embankment there that they crawled up to, to get away from the building as it failed. We did take pictures of the site as it exists today. We attempted to recreate that same angle. However, we found that a hundred and ten-plus years of tree growth in that area has largely changed the view from that perspective. So it wasn't feasible to capture the exact same perspective that uh, Oxley captured in nineteen oh nine, but you can see the ruins as they stand. And I think that's one of the fascinating sites, things about that site, is it's one of the few areas in Fergus Falls that you can go to today and see it exactly as it looked a hundred and ten years ago when it fell, because the site was abandoned and later dubbed as a city park as it exists today, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Questions for R.C.?
Well, uh, question, does the city maintain and clean up around there now? Is that it?
They do. Um, on the, I've got to get my directions straight now. The south side. There is actually somebody maintaining the north side of the property as well. Um, we don't know who that is. So as far as I understand, that work is appreciated. I'm assuming that it's one of the property owners that is maintaining that. But the south side is maintained by the city. All of the property is city property. That being said, and maybe it's fair to point out, there's currently no easy access to the north side. Uh, it's only, correct, yeah, because the dam is out.
Private property on the north side.
The immediate bank and several feet in is the city's property, uh, which is being maintained by.
The old railroad bed that's been purchased by the other landowners on the north side, is that it?
I don't know if the property line goes to or past the railroad bed. I'd have to look at the J.S. website.
Another interesting part of history, for a number of years, on the south side of the river and east of the dam, uh, just over the bluff there, uh, was a uh, auto body dump ground. And I don't know if there's still parts of those auto bodies around there or not.
There are.
There is.
Yes, that.
Just push them over the bank and don't worry about it.
Exactly. That's part of the conversation before the city council is regarding cleanup of that site, because there are old automobiles.
Cleaned up yet or not?
No, um, we're also working on accessibility for the site. There are stairs that were built there. They are precarious because they lack a railing, and the embankments next to those stairs are very steep. So we are, are working on a partnership to uh, have a volunteer group produce those railings and then have them installed by um, city staff so that the site is a little more accessible than it is, so.
I'll make a motion to forward this to the council for approval.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Vern, seconds. Any other discussion?
Thank you for all your work.
Absolutely, thank you. Jill, let's take roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes. Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Clara, we don't have the Westridge Mall final plan, so we'll skip that. Any upcoming applications? Is there anyone that has anything to say about the mall that's on our agenda? Some sound like it, okay.
Should we let Sherry know that her part of the agenda has passed? Yeah.
Sherry, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yes, sorry. You joined right after they voted on your portion of the agenda. Your um, variance was approved, and it'll go on to city council.
Okay, thank you. I, I enjoy the history of Broken Down Dam, but.
Thank you for listening. Yes, um, I will, I will just add, there is a condition on the variance that you um, paint it to match the house.
Okay, okay.
Oh, that's all, but it'll be, it'll be in front of council probably at the next meeting, which is, I believe, the seventh.
And that's the final hurdle then?
That's the final thing, yep.
Also, the, the application be amended to include the setback.
Okay. Could you hear that, Sherry?
The application, the, to the setback, what setback?
The side setback, so we're also, we also recommended it because you're not in compliance with the five feet after side yard. So our motion going on to city council would include the variance for your side yard setback as well.
Okay.
And Sherry, we can help get that language in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Okay, we got all business ordinance updates and discussion.
I worked with Darren on these, and I, I hope people are happy with what they came out with and all that Darren talked, but I, I think I'm feeling really good about where these landed.
Did everybody get a chance to look at those? Did everybody get a chance to look at the ordinances that Darren and
We basically just took the input from our previous discussions and got it all in there and went through our notes, and I think it's a really usable. But let Darren do the talking. He's the expert.
Um, so yeah, what you have there is updates. And basically, the steps for this would be, obviously, if you wish to forward these updates, we would send them to the city attorney to draft them up, and then we would um, uh, have a public hearing on them formally.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the process.
Okay, we have a motion to move forward. We have a second.
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Any other discussions? If not, we need roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Vern? Don? Kelsey?
Yes. Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Any other city planner or city, city council updates?
Um, I will just say that we will have our new city planner starting on June first, so she will, her name is Karen Flom. Um, she is currently working for the city of West Fargo, uh, and she is very excited to come. And she's been, she's been working with um, their HUD programming in, in their planning department. So she's really excited to get into the more nitty-gritty of the day-to-day planning experience, so.
Flom, you said?
Mm-hmm, F.L.O.M. Yep.
And she's going to be full-time?
Full-time, yep. We're getting her office set up this week, and we're excited to welcome her on Tuesday. So this is.
Darren, thanks you for everything you've done. I understand this is your last meeting with us, and you couldn't even be here in person.
Uh, yes, it is. Well, thank you all as well for all of your work.
Is that because you're so sentimental, you didn't want to shed any tears, or what?
Uh, no, I was not able to make it today, but.
Well, from the uh, planning commission, thanks for all that you've done while you were here.
Yes, thank you. Stinker.
Okay, anything else to adjourn?
And Clara, you and Jill will still be, even away from city planner coming on yesterday.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Darren. Thanks, Kelsey.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.